6:30, and tonight we are going to be hearing, after any public comments, a study session on City of Emeryville impact fees. Are there any public comments at this time?
No, Bob.
Not yet, huh?
Just raise the fees up, Bob.
All the public here.
Just raise them.
More fees, right? Okay. Thank you. Helen Bean will present.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council members. So tonight, what we're going to be discussing are impact fees in the city of Emeryville, basically reviewing the transportation impact fee and talking about two potential impact fees that could be imposed in Emeryville. But first, as a little background, impact fees are a potential funding source that the city can use to offset some of the loss of funds from the dissolution of redevelopment. And they can be used to fund public facilities, capital improvements, and affordable housing, where development pays its pro-rata share of costs incurred by the city as a result of a development project as a one-time fee. And a fund can be established that can be used to finance improvements over time. However, it's important to remember that the fees cannot be used to fund existing deficits, only improvements meeting the demand for services generated by growth. And we have, the city has an existing traffic impact fee, which is an impact fee, and the school district has an impact fee as well. So the Mitigation Fee Act is the law that governs impact fees, and it sets forth findings that the city council would be required to make in imposing a new fee, and I'm going to go over these briefly. First, they have to describe for the purpose for which the fee would be used. Second, a reasonable relationship has to be demonstrated between the use of the fee and the type of development project in which the fee is imposed. And you also have to demonstrate a reasonable relationship between the need for the public improvement service or community amenity funded by the fee and the type of new development. And lastly, you need to document the maximum amount of the fee, which reflects the proportional cost of the public improvement service or a community amenity that's attributable to that new development. So that requires a study where that maximum amount of the fee is laid out, and that would establish the maximum fee or cap. And then the city council can set the fee at any level up to that cap that is justified by the study. So in setting that fee, it's important to evaluate the financial impacts on development of those fees. It requires balancing the needs for cities to fund improvements to serve future growth with an understanding of the impacts of fee burdens on new development. Because fees that are too high can negatively affect the financial feasibility of a project, and it can place the city at a competitive disadvantage compared to neighboring communities. And then, it's not a good situation when new development is really restricted, because you lose more money than you gain through the impact fee. Really, over time, property tax revenues or sales tax revenues from new development really generate more for the general fund than a one-time impact fee. So just to start with the transportation impact fee, this was adopted in September 1990. It was updated in 1998. But in 2000, the 2009 general plan called for a multi-modal transportation system, which included more than just vehicles, public transit, pedestrians, bicycles as well. So the city has initiated a revised traffic mitigation fee study that gives all these modes equal emphasis. And the fees will be used to pay for transportation improvements in all modes. And the development projects are able to reduce their fee if they provide alternative transportation models. The city has retained FER and PIERs to repair the study, and this is going to be presented in February at a city council study session. So I'm not going to spend very much time on it tonight. Then there's the general government and parks and recreation facilities impact fees. And this was, there were two development impact fees studies conducted by the city council, one in April 2007 and one in August 2008. And the second study was conducted to respond to developer concerns about the high level of the justified fee, the magnitude of the aggregate development costs, and the disparity of the fee compared with neighboring cities. So as a part of this process, a comparative fee analysis was also conducted in January 2008, which I'm going to talk about a little bit. So again, a comparative fee analysis compares the level of proposed fees with that of neighboring cities. So it gives the city council information it needs to determine how to adjust those fees so the city can remain competitive. And the way that it works is that hypothetical projects are envisioned, and then it compares the total of impact fees, permit fees, plan check, and inspection fees on those projects across a range of cities. So all the fees are combined together. But the issue to consider here, and these were some of the criticisms raised by the developers, property owner community, was that, you know, how do you define total fee burden? Do you include assessments, you know, such as Emery-Garant Assessment, or extraordinary development costs, which is common in Emeryville because of the need to remediate brownfields? But on the other hand, you need to look at development incentives offered by the city. So it's a two-sided coin. This is the result of that fee analysis. So over here, you can see the Emeryville's fees in 2008 as they were existing. These are the three projects. So it's 110-unit multifamily project, 100,000-square-feet retail project, and a 200,000-square-feet office project. So on the fees existing in 2008, the combined fees for those projects, you know, were roughly 1.25 million for the multifamily, 1.75 for office, and, you know, 2.2 million for the retail. And then you can see what those fees were in Berkeley, in Oakland, El Cerrito, low fees. You know, Richmond has a really high fee for multifamily. And then there's the average. Okay. So essentially, that way you can compare what the existing fee was, the proposed fee at the time, which I'll talk about in a second, compared to the average fee across all those cities. So again, impact fees cannot fund existing deficiencies. And this is really important to consider when you're talking about a parks or government facilities fee, because this is an expensive improvement. And the study assumes a standard of three acres per thousand residents, and that's also the standard that was approved in the current general plan. But the existing acreage is around 2.06 acres. That was the total in 2008. It hasn't changed a lot since then. So any new park that's developed, if funded by a fee, only a portion of that cost can be funded by the fee, because a portion is making up for existing deficiencies, the difference between 2.06 acres per thousand and three acres per thousand. So it will have an impact on the city's general fund. And if you choose to move ahead with this and update the study, you should look at specifically what that impact is. So at the time, the maximum level of justified fees in 2008 were 27,000 per multifamily unit, $13.44 per commercial square foot, and $16.49 per office square foot. But the proposed fees were much less than this. Again, that was 8,500 per multifamily unit, $3 per office square foot. And there was no increase for retail or hotel, because it was determined that patrons of those uses don't use city parks a lot.
You mean, no increase? So what was the rate at that time?
Well, here, I'll just go back.
Okay.
Let's see. So this shows you. I mean, I don't know the individual rates, but this is the combined.
Uh-huh.
So that was existing, and those proposed fees brought the fees up to here. So you see that retail is, you know, basically flat, but there's the big increase for multifamily.
So the other numbers were increases? They weren't amounts, flat amounts? They were increases?
Right.
Okay. So increasing by 27,000?
Well, there wasn't a fee before.
Got it.
You see, this is a new fee that was being recommended, and that chart integrated that new fee with the others.
Add on to all the other fees.
Correct, yeah. So at the time, though, due to the economic recession, no fees were imposed, and work stopped on this project. So now, moving forward to the affordable housing impact fee, the city currently does not have an affordable housing impact fee. It can be used, and is used by other cities, to offset funds lost through the dissolution of redevelopment, and also to address the legal restrictions placed on application of the Affordable Housing Set-aside Ordinance, which I will talk about in a minute. The Housing Committee has considered this fee and recommends that the city council take initial steps to implement this fee by pursuing RFP for a NEXIS study. So in terms of the Affordable Housing Set-aside Ordinance and what has happened here, the city's current ordinance compels developers to include affordable housing within their projects. 20% affordable to moderate-income households on for-sale developments. On rental developments, it's 15% affordable, 6% affordable to very low income, and 9% to moderate income. However, the application of this ordinance has been significantly restricted by a 2009 statewide legal decision called the Palmer Decision, which restricts the applying inclusionary ordinances to rental housing unless the development receives a direct financial contribution from the city or a density bonus. So essentially, it's very limited to use on rental housing. The process to initiate an affordable housing impact fee is to prepare the study that I've described before, that sets the maximum amount of the fee that can be charged, and then the city council can look at how to actually place that fee based on market considerations. The city council also may wish to consider just using this fee for the production of affordable rental housing, since the ownership housing, the Affordable Housing Set-aside Ordinance can still be applied to ownership housing. And then both the residential and commercial impact fee can be imposed to support affordable housing. So these are what we're recommending as the next steps, is that we refer this discussion of developing a park, municipal facility, and affordable housing impact fees to the new Economic Development Committee that's just being established for discussion and for development of a recommendation back to the city council, which you would consider before updating the transportation impact fee and before updating the study, the general government and parks, recreation facilities impact fee study, and initiating the Affordable Housing NEXIS study. The city council can also adopt a resolution that will make new fees under consideration, such the general government and parks, the affordable housing, applicable to future projects prior to completing the fee studies and adopting the fees. So there's going to take a certain amount of time to get through this process, because we want to do the studies, to have input from the Economic Development Committee, to have the developer community look at that and give us their feedback. But at the same time, there's a lot of development that's happening right now, especially in terms of residential apartments. The Sherwin-Williams site is going to move into development probably within the next year. They're going to select a developer. So if you choose to, you can pass a resolution, which, once it's passed, then those future residential developments will be subject to the fee when and if it's finally imposed. So that's the end of my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have one question, which is, is there something that's complicated about determining how to perform the NEXIS study that warrants sending it to the Economic Development Committee before moving forward with that? I'm not clear on that.
Well, I think it's just to consider, you know, you have a number of fees here. So you've got a transportation fee, you've got the parks and general government, which was really never, there was no closure on that, really. And now, a new fee, affordable housing fee. So I think you want to look at all of the fees as a package and see, make sure that you do want to move ahead with them, and make your, give a, see what the development community recommends through that Economic Development Committee, so you have that input as well.
But doesn't the NEXIS study just provide more information towards that?
It does. I mean, it costs money to do the NEXIS study, so.
Okay.
Mayor West?
Yeah.
I think it's a wise thing for the Economic Development Committee to hold public hearings on this. But I also think that this is a component part of the overall city's financial condition. And I would like to see this go to the Finance Committee, so that they can put it in the overall perspective of the entire city's financial situation. So I would like to see it go both to Economic Development and the Finance Committee.
Okay.
And then, I do have another question for Michael. This resolution that says, we're passing a resolution that says, no matter what we decide, in the future, you'll be on the hook for it. How can we do that?
Yeah. Well, there's a, there was a decision out of the city in San Francisco many years ago that dealt with this very topic, and it's a, certainly, it, so you can do that. It provides for that. It's not a sort of open-ended provision, so that if somebody comes in and obtains their entitlements and moves forward with construction, if they get their, you know, occupancy permits before the, you know, before the fee is in place, then, you know, they're free. They move onward. So there is some precedent for it. There is legal case law that supports it. We, in fact, did that previously back in, we adopted a resolution on this same topic back in 1996, when we were in the process, I believe it's '96 or '97, we were in the process of updating our impact fee. And at the time, we were beginning to process applications from IKEA. And IKEA was indicating that they were going to file a vesting tentative map. And under the law, once an applicant files what's called a vesting tentative map, then all the rules and regulations, et cetera, that are in place at that time that it's filed are all that you can apply to that project. So as a means to deal with that impending filing of a vesting tentative map by IKEA, we passed a resolution that said, essentially, we're in the process of updating the impact fee program. Once it's done, to the extent there's a new fee, that'll apply to IKEA. And that's a...
But we have a precedent.
It's a precedent, and there's case law that supports allowing cities to do that.
Well, I, for one, think it's very important we move ahead with that resolution, because we have several really large projects looming on the horizon, and this is going to take us time to do it right. So it would behoove us to protect our future finances.
Do you know, in general, Helen, when you talk to developers that are trying to put projects together, I don't care what kind, whether the commercial or housing, is there a profit margin below which they won't go?
Yes.
So do you know, in general, for commercial projects, how much profit they anticipate being able to make before they'll walk?
Well, it varies by project and by the source of funding for particular projects. So it's hard to answer that question, just as a...
Would you say housing developers kind of are looking at a certain amount?
Yes. But at the same time, it's important to see that because of the Palmer Decision, rental housing developers were relieved of an obligation that they had previously funded. So the Palmer Decision was really a benefit to residential rental developers.
Right, right. I guess my question is, if someone wants to make a 7% or 8% profit margin, for example, would they walk at 5% profit?
It's just really hard to answer that, you know, give a definitive answer based on a particular number, because there's a lot of risk factors that influence what a developer does, and their evaluation of the market, and their evaluation of future growth of revenue.
Right.
And that differs from developer to developer. But I think overall, you can say that if you impose that fee high enough, I mean, for instance, you know, first, the affordable housing fee, the city of Berkeley just approved the $28,000 per unit fee. So that's really high. That's the maximum cap that their study found, right? So they just took the maximum cap and imposed it. So they probably won't do that. They probably won't pay that fee. But there's the option in the city of Berkeley that they can build those units in the project, you know, essentially meet the obligations of the Affordable Housing Set-aside Ordinance anyway. And so they'll probably take that option. So in a way, it's a, for affordable housing, it's a workaround the Palmer Decision in a certain sense.
What flexibility do we have with that fee? Because if I'm a developer, I might have a piece of property that I can develop in another part of town, which would be more revenue-enhancing for me than another part of town. Is there flexibility as far as...
But once the fee's established, I don't think so.
There's no flexibility?
But those are the, these are all the questions we can look at, you know, through the process of working with the Economic Development Committee and Finance Committee. And I'm sure we'll get a lot of other questions from the development community.
Let me explore that just a little bit further. So we set a, say we take housing, and we set a fee, but there is a nonprofit developer that comes forward, and the council is really interested in having workforce housing, and the developer says, there's no way I can pencil this in. Michael, does the council have the ability to waive a fee for a public benefit?
Well, that's something that raises sort of fairness issues for others who have come before and will come after that point in time. So, you know, that's a, that's not a, you know, something that the city, I mean, once you establish the fee, generally, the only way that you can modify it is if there is a showing by the developer that the impacts from their project are not going to generate the need for this fee, notwithstanding what has been already established in your fee study. So they have to prove up that somehow your fee study does not apply to them in that same amount. So just waiving it entirely because you want a particular project, I think that is a position that's hard for the city to back up.
But there's an in-lie clause, so a residential developer, for instance, can just provide the affordable units in the project instead of paying the fee, which is what the Affordable Housing Set-aside Ordinance previously required them to do, and which the Palmer Decision now relieved rental developers from doing that. So a rental developer could just follow the Affordable Housing Set-aside Ordinance and provide the units within the project, and then they wouldn't have to pay the fee.
Yeah, you can have that type of...
Which is why you explaining that Berkeley set it so high, that they're basically making, for all intents and purposes, the hasn't set aside.
Exactly.
That would be a better option for a developer than paying the fee.
Correct.
Okay. I'm sorry, did you have something else to add?
No.
Okay. Jack?
Okay. So I have a question about the timeline here, then. Right now, we're talking about and doing a study for the, or the study's already been done for the transportation impact fee?
It's nearing completion.
Okay, that's nearing completion. And then, you're looking for direction as to whether or not we should do the housing impact fee?
Well, the recommendation here is to take it to the Economic Development Committee and have them give you a recommendation about proceeding with the NEXIS study for the affordable housing.
But if we don't have any numbers, what are they, what are they discussing in terms of fees?
Well, I think it's just an opportunity for the development community to understand what we're doing and give comments, and have the Economic Development Committee respond to that, those comments, and have a discussion at that level.
Those opportunities, though, don't they exist all along the way? I mean, even if we do the NEXIS study, we don't necessarily have to adopt the fees, and we can pick within a range of fees that were given, right?
Correct.
Okay. So there's that. And then, the other question that I have is, with regard to the parks and recreation facilities impact fee, that study was done in 2007. So how often do we need to kind of refresh these studies before that may expire?
Well, that city needs to be updated in a few ways. First of all, the inventory of parks needs to be updated. And there's been a general plan approved since that study was done, so you want to make sure it's consistent with the general plan. We've also adopted the parks plan.
Right.
And so we want to make sure that the inventory of existing parks is correct. The other wrinkle there is that a lot of the parkland is now with the successor agency, so it's sort of caught up in that transaction.
Okay.
So that's going to affect that study.
Okay.
Because it's unknown at this time whether those, that parkland is going to be able to be parks or not.
Right.
So that's an uncertainty.
Okay.
The other issue is the cost. There were certain cost assumptions that I think are outdated now.
Okay. And then, how much, and maybe you don't know this right now, but how much would the housing impact study cost? What is the cost of that?
Is that the NEXIS study you mean?
The NEXIS study, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we were looking at, you know, 60,000 to 100,000. Wow, expensive.
If I can add, just back to part of your question about how often should you be looking at these studies? As Helen alluded to, part of what the studies will look at is, what are the costs of providing these facilities, be it a street improvement or acquiring parkland or what have you? And it's based on those costs that you then establish your fee. As time goes on, the costs of constructing these things or acquiring land go on, and they go up, well, they tend to go upward, they could go down, but our experience is that they go up. And so you would then need to update your fee program to take into account those increases and those costs, to then justify a revision or an increase to the fee that you might choose to impose. So, you know, generally, I think you might want to look at it at some, you know, some period of time, be it five, seven years, or somewhere in thereabouts, where you might want to do a real update to those programs.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Helen.
If there are no further questions right now, let's hear from any public who'd like to weigh in or comment on this. Open it up for public comment.
Joshua Simon, although I'm on the school board, I'm here as a citizen and a member of the Housing Committee. And thanking, really want to thank you for going ahead with this. I want to encourage you to proceed with the studies as soon as is reasonable. I understand they're expensive, but I think it's very important to find a way to frame the discussion. Talking about a fee without knowing the parameters of that fee, it's a difficult discussion to have. It's one discussion if the fee's $1,000, and another discussion if it's $28,000. So to the degree that we can, I know that the process is important, but to the degree we can do the studies to bracket that discussion, I'd encourage that. But I think it's a really important thing, and it's a good progressive policy to begin to look at how to link the impacts of development with the services that are needed to service those developments. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor West and Councilman Bob Cantor, I'm with the Emeryville Chamber of Commerce. Just one word about referring this to the Economic Development Committee, which hopefully you'll be establishing later on this evening. I'd like to put in a word for that, and the Finance Committee, too, by the way, as Nora mentioned. It might, Jack, you asked what would be the benefit of that. Depending on who attends the meeting, it might be a valuable forum to get input on what, how other cities have done, how developers have reacted, and even potentially answer Ruth's question about what that profit margin level is. I think it would just be, it wouldn't delay things that much, and it would be a good platform to get that kind of information on what other developers who've developed in other cities who have experience have experienced in other towns that assess these fees and can bring that to the table. Ultimately, it's going to come to you anyway. You don't have to adopt what the committee recommends, but it would be, I think, a valuable source of information. I'd strongly recommend you refer this to this impending new committee that's going to be developed later on. And the Finance Committee, too, which more of an internal... to be developed later on, and the Finance Committee too, which morph into an internal analysis as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, a couple of comments. The objective is to get as much housing as possible, so you want to make sure that you don't want to adopt fees that discourage people from moving forward. If there was a way to find out who was discouraged, that would be very useful. And then regarding the transportation fee, I've been complaining about this probably for about 10 years. You know, that fee is based upon what it says in a textbook about transportation impacts to projects. It has nothing to do with reality. There's never been an audit of the transportation impact fee. And so when, when a development opens, if it has 10 times more traffic, you're not going to see any more revenue. So I don't know how you can do anything about it, but an audit of the existing fees and, and the traffic, actual traffic would be very useful. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment at this time? Okay, seeing none, I'll turn back to council to see how we'd like to move forward.
Mayor West, I hope we move forward tonight, and I hope we direct the city attorney to bring back a resolution that will make the new fees under consideration applicable. Whether or not we arrive at a resolution, we better get, get that particular resolution taken care of. So those are two things I'd like to see us move forward on.
Great. I, I agree with moving forward on a resolution to establish a fee, whether it's been, while we're still working out the details. But I'd like to add to that, that, that we direct staff to actually move forward on finding someone to do the NEXIS study at the same time as sending all of the information and the discussion to both of the committees that you mentioned. I, I don't really see, I know it wouldn't be much of a delay, but why even spend the time waiting for the, for the committees to consider? The Housing Committee did and recommended it, and so with that basis, I'd like to move forward on, moving forward on the NEXIS study, and then also sending it to those two committees to discuss. They'll know the process, and when that information comes back, they'll be ready and primed to, to respond.
I need some clarifying information. We have three separate trails that we're moving forward on: transportation, housing, and parks. Now, is this NEXIS study, there are going to be three separate studies? One total study? How's that going to work? And how much is it going to cost? And how long is it going to take?
Right. So the NEXIS study that we refer to is just for the affordable housing.
Right.
Right? That, that would be a completely new study. That's why it would be expensive. We've never done it before. The parks study has already been done. It needs to be updated. So that's another study. It's another decision. And I don't have a...
An update would be much less expensive.
Right, exactly. And then you've already retained fair and peers to do the transportation study. That's almost completed. So there's three separate studies.
It's so realistic if we, we went on the path that Mayor West is suggesting. When could this information come back to the council for action? June?
That might be right.
I, I like the idea of moving on all tracks at once.
Time moves fast.
So I don't know what direction we're to give tonight...
For multiple tests.
About the parks update, but could we direct that as well at this time?
Same time?
Yeah.
Yeah. Great. We can bring an RFP back for your consideration for the affordable housing study very soon.
Great.
And then shortly after, if you choose to, we could bring an RFP for an updating the parks study.
That would be great. I think it sounds like the affordable housing study, not only to me is most critical, but also will take a little bit longer because of the size of the study. Is that correct? Any, do we want to take a vote on that, or is that an agreement?
That's just, I think we have a direction.
That's the direction. Okay. So that's the, the direction then to staff. Any clarifications needed?
No.
Great. All right.